Marula, to approve the following, that report LS 17015A respecting the appeals of ward boundary bylaw 17-030 to the Ontario Municipal Board and its appendix remain confidential. Counselor Green?
A procedural question through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The motion is to have it remain confidential, but typically when we come out of camera, we vote on the contents, no?
You, Madam Deputy Mayor, no. You provided, you voted on direction to staff in closed session, that remains in closed session.
Okay.
And the report itself remains confidential, which is what you're voting on in open session.
Thank you, Counselor.
So just the confidentiality?
Correct. Thank you, Counselor Green. All those in favor?
Carrie.
Carrie Brooks-Joyner is going to be providing us with a presentation for item 7.2.
Madam Chair, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm Carrie Brooks-Joyner, the manager of Tourism and Events, and joining me is Sarah Lynn Foote-Fusina, Cultural Project Specialist. Sarah chairs the SEET team and coordinates its activities. So we are here today to respond to the council direction from May, and we have also provided council with an information report in your package. Hamilton has a long tradition of holding events for the enjoyment of the public and for utilizing public spaces for event activities. As a municipality, we plan and deliver lots of events, and community organizations, individuals, and businesses also deliver events in our community. Events bring people together literally and figuratively. They can inspire, delight, challenge, engage, and entertain. Events also employ people, purchase services locally, and encourage spending in our community. Staff appreciate the opportunity to provide information to council about SEET, and we know that you and your staff receive questions about holding events in Hamilton, and we are pleased to provide some clarity about SEET's role and process. And on the screen is the postcard that we distribute to event organizers, and if you would like additional copies for your office to distribute to constituents, we are happy to provide those to you. So SEET is an acronym for the Special Events Advisory Team. Its mandate is to conduct a review process of events that are held outdoors on city property to ensure the health and safety of participants and the protection of city assets such as parks, roads, and so on. In some cases, events on private property are also reviewed when the event will have significant impact on city services, such as the Binbrook and Ancaster fairs, they go through SEET. So SEET is a team comprised of about 25 city staff representing various municipal divisions or services such as, but not limited to, police, HSR, parking, corridor management, and so on. Other services and stakeholders are consulted as needed to respond to the particular applications they have in front of them. SEET is administered by the city's Event Office, which is in the Tourism and Culture Division. As the Events Office, we are the interface with the public, we chair the meetings, and oversee the review process. We process about 350 applications per year. Over to Sarah.
So let's talk about the SEET application process. When an organization submits a SEET application, it informs all of the affected city divisions about the proposed event. It makes sure that all health and safety guidelines are met. It makes sure that all necessary permits, permissions, insurance, and approvals are secured. It ensures that there are no scheduling conflicts with other events or activities, and it ensures that city services are not negatively impacted as a result of the event. There are also several important things that SEET is not responsible for. SEET is not a funder. As a team, it does not set fees or collect payments. It is not involved in approving programming for events. It does not set or enforce geographic or time radiuses for events, and it does not Event organizers are required to submit a SEET application 120 days prior to their event if their event is on a roadway, and 60 days prior to the event for all other locations such as parks or the City Hall for court. This scheduling ensures that there's enough time for multiple departments to vet the application, request further information, and if necessary, obtain council approval for event elements like first-time road closure requests. Once an application is submitted, it is reviewed for completeness by Events Office staff who administer the SEET process. If the event or organization has any outstanding fees owing to the city, the SEET application will not be considered until all outstanding amounts are paid in full. Once vetted, the application is reviewed by SEET members.
I'm giving you an example of a neighborhood association with means, but there are others with no means or very little means to pull off the onerous task just of paying for the expenses of a relatively small event. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I think SEET Lite, as you put it, is a good direction to turn to as opposed to Counselor Jay just going old-school and saying, "It's your park, just do the event," because chances are pretty good we don't have staff on the weekend that you're doing the event patrolling the areas hypothetically to make certain everything's going off without a hitch. And I can use an example just from this past weekend. I got some DBs reported to me from an event we were having down in the North End outside the gentleman's front door that were well above what's considered fair and normal practice in terms of music in a SEET-approved festival. We had no staff the entire day and into the night, and that music stayed at that volume the entire time. And I don't want to be, I won't be, that counselor who says, "SEET is too onerous, don't bother." I'd rather be that counselor who says, "You know what? We have a SEET Lite program. It's much easier, it's less onerous, and since you practically own the park, you've adopted the park, you helped redevelop the park, and you're doing great things in your neighborhood for your neighbors, we should probably find ways to make it work for you in a less onerous capacity." So I will deal with that offline. I wanted to get it on the record because more and more this seems to be an issue for folks, and it really comes down to, we're not Supercrawl, we're not the Festival of Friends, we're just a bunch of residents trying to get a few hundred people together in the neighborhood and build our neighborhood in small ways. So hopefully, we can do that soon because, and I'm not knocking, I know what we had at the city of Hamilton prior to this, and it was a mishmash, and things were missed, and processes took a heck of a lot longer, way more organized. It's really, truly important, and I know you do great work, we work together all the time, but more and more, I'm considering the need of a SEET Lite. I love the way you put that, so we'll keep it at that for now, and I thank you for your time, and I appreciate the report and all the good work of all the staff involved, including, of course, the two of you.
Counselor, did you want to move motion on that perhaps a little later after we go through our?
Yes, okay, I'll formulate something.
Thank you. Next on the list is Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Carrie and Sarah. Could you just go back two or three slides, Carrie, the one that says council approve requests, that one? So I've always been slightly confused, Carrie, between what SEET applications are vetted through your multi-departmental team versus these ones that come through council. So you really have no part in the ones that are up there that come through council, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Do you want to answer it?
Through you, Chair. No, SEET does review all of the applications that you're seeing above. We're just trying to show some of the examples of event applications that would also come to you for approval. So anytime there's a first-time road closure request, there's a report that goes to council that's approved for that road closure. The same can be said for the other two items. We do, we're included on the circulation for the special occasion permit notifications, and we see, you know, the progress that those are making through approval. But this slide was really just to speak to some of the ways that counselors are able to have to comment or approve certain aspects of events.
So when that baseball tournament comes through Mohawk Sports Park, and we often have a resolution at council, Madam Deputy Mayor, that says council does not object, municipal significance, I don't, I can't recall if I see a comment from SEET on that resolution itself, but you've already been vetted and/or consulted through that, Madam Deputy Mayor. Is that what I've heard, Sarah?
Through the Chair. That would be correct, that we've already received a SEET application. If we haven't, then we're connecting directly with licensing staff to let them know that we need to connect with the organizer to have them submit. In terms of sports tournaments, those actually don't come through SEET. Recreation vets all of those applications.
Okay, so that's what I was, thanks, Sarah, and I didn't mean for you to open up a little further can of worms for me, but that's kind of my little bit confusion. So are there events that occur in the city that won't go through SEET but will go through a different department like REC? But I thought that REC is at your table as well, so can you help me understand, delineate the difference for me, please?
Through the Chair. That's really the only example. Yes, there is somebody from Recreation that sits on our SEET team. The reason why Recreation vets those applications is because there were so many of them compared to all the event applications we are already getting, that it was an agreement made with Recreation that they would be, have oversight over those applications.
Okay, so maybe someday we'll just get maybe a list informally, if that's possible. I'll leave that with you and our new Director of Recreation, just so we can maybe understand the distinction between all these items. REC deals with solely, because it's under their purview, versus the ones you've said that would normally come through SEET. I'll leave that with you, ladies, if I could, please. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And so, Carrie, good presentation, thank you. A question for you. When an event does a SEET application, is approved, and then is a complete and utter failure in the community, and we had one in May, which I'm not sure who they had paid, who they hadn't paid, but it was well-reported in the media that they did not pay their bills and basically left town after a day and a half. How does that information come back to the SEET team, or how is it dealt with? What's the process around that?
Through you, Madam Chair. It is brought back to the SEET team for discussion. It is added to the events record, and should that event organizer come back the following year with a new SEET application for an event, that information is brought forward and considered as part of their application.
Okay. And before, when the SEET application comes in and it's vetted by your group and approved, do they need to pay the fees owing to the city before they have the event?
Before their SEET application is reviewed.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Oh, before it's reviewed. So that's the leasing of the park, that's all the fees for, okay, so when they lease Water Down Memorial Park, whatever the fee is, they have to pay that first?
Through you, Madam Chair. Any outstanding fees from previous events or dollars owing to the city would have to be paid prior to a new application being considered.
And I get that, thank you. So then going forward, if that same organization were to come back and put another application in, if there were any outstanding fees not paid or complaints from people, because there were quite a few vendors that basically the whole event shut down in day two, I think, of a three-day event?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's only dollars owing to the city that would put a restriction on, not to any third parties.
Okay, but any complaints from third parties would be put on file, taken into consideration?
Through you, Madam Chair. Put on file and under consideration. And very often, we meet with an event organizer to go over the complaints that we've had.
Okay.
And at times, an event organizer has been asked to present to the SEET committee and to answer questions directly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ferguson, followed by Counselor Brenda Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question. The special occasion permit that needs council approval, we're finding about four or five every meeting coming to council. I can't ever one even being questioned, let alone anybody opposing any. Is this something you should just be able to get the ward council approval on? Because that seems to be where the interest, if any, lies, rather than have to go through the formal process of a council resolution, or is that the requirement to get a liquor license?
Through you, Madam Chair. That would be a question Legal Services or Bylaw would have to answer. I'm afraid I can't comment.
Nicole's not here, because it takes up a lot, maybe Marty can answer it. Marty?
So through you, Madam Chair, we also have the same concern as staff that we're processing these. There never seem to be any concerns except the appropriate ward council. So we're looking at this as a continuous improvement project to see if we can streamline the process. We're going to work with the AGCO to see if we can eliminate that council requirement.
It seemed to speed it up a bit for the applicants, too. So would it be appropriate to you, Madam Chairman, to Marty, that I just move a motion that we only require ward council approval for special occasion permits?
Through the Chair, we have to look at the legislation, but we certainly could take that direction to look at it.
Okay, do you need a motion to do that, through you, Madam Chairman, to get that direction? Okay, so you'll have to report back to us someday shortly then, will you, Marty? Do you allow us to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson?
Yep, thank you. And as the previous speaker, Counselor Farr was talking about the Easter egg hunts. We also have now Halloween parades, we also have movie nights in our parks, and they seem to be getting better and better organized every year. So it almost seems like it should be a copy and paste when we're all finished and done. So I really appreciate where Counselor Farr is coming from. Just a quick question, and thankfully, because of Canada turning 150, there was a lot of parties in our parks this year, and there were some that did come through the SEET application. I had several in my ward. Just a quick, and I actually went back, after I saw the poster for this one event, I went back and looked at their application, and it specifically says, "Is there any alcohol?" No. "Is there fireworks?" Yes, and the whole thing. But on the poster, it said BYOB. So how is, how can we, and I don't want to put any more red tape in this for you, but I'm wondering if there's just such a way we could ask them for their advertising, or we can, you know, make a note of this, saying, "Okay, you can do this next year, but you can't put that on your poster." I don't know how we can address that, but it's not one, it's several, and I don't want to, I don't want to rain on anyone's fun time, but when you have 500 people in a neighborhood park, professional fireworks, and everybody's got their coolers with them, it just, you know, this mother inside me goes, "Oh, my God, what if something happens?"
Through you, Madam Chair, that is certainly a challenge. I mean, SEET responds to the information that the applicant provides to us. We do not collect their marketing material, and very often, at the time they submit a SEET application, they haven't developed their marketing material yet.
Right, okay. And as far as fireworks are concerned, is there any provision in there that they must have insurance, that it must be done by a professional company? I didn't, and I didn't really pay a lot of attention to that portion, but I'm just questioning.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, fireworks automatically trigger a SEET application, and we do require insurance.
Okay, thank you very much. Good questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, do we deal with receiving the presentation before we deal with Counselor's motion?
Yes, please.
Move by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor? Carrie, Counselor Farr.
So moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson. A, that the appropriate staff be requested to work with Neighborhood Association and/or organize community group representatives and willing counselors to develop a SEET Lite model, making smaller, community-led events and gatherings much less onerous, and B, that the SEET Lite model contemplate a cut-and-paste process, to use your term, for annual events that go unchanged year over year. Okay? And I think I already expanded enough on that, and I do want to make it very clear, most of the SEET work that is done by all these good people that sit at the SEET table is very, very important and much less onerous than it used to be.
Thank you.
But in the cases of smaller events, this is important.
Thank you, Counselor Farr. Move by Farr, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor? Carrie, Madam Clerk, do I need a motion as well to receive item 7.2? It says so in my, move by Counselor Brenda Johnson.
Actually, because Counselor, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, Counselor Farr has put forward a motion. It would take the motion away to receive.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Moving on to item 7.3, Pier 8, Request for Proposal RFP Evaluation and Scoring Framework, PED 14002E, Citywide. Philbert Kim.
I can't see it very well. I think this is you. That's not me.
Want me to just, sorry, Madam Chair, just do a quick introduction on this. This is another key milestone for the West Harbor redevelopment plan, and it fulfills a staff direction of last November. Philbert's going to do the presentation. Today is also a big day for us because it's the official close of the RFQ for the Pier 8 lands later on this afternoon. So this kind of goes right on the heels of that. I'd just like to say thank you to a large staff contingent that makes up many different departments, divisions. Tina Eko, Donna Draws, Michael Kine, Carly Polito, Joe Spiler, our consulting team led by Deloitte and John Campbell. And I'd like to recognize Philbert Kim, who has been the key quarterback on this whole solicitation process, and so I'll give it to Philbert.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chris. I'd like to thank everyone here for the opportunity to speak this afternoon, to address this committee, members of the public, media, and fellow staff. We're here today to speak specifically to address the topic of the Request for Proposals evaluation criteria for the Pier 8 development lands. If you recall, back in November, we were here in front of this committee asking for authority and approval to initiate the entire solicitation process. We were given that authority, and within that motion, council had required that staff come back to this committee and to council to touch base and to ensure that there are certain elements within the evaluation criteria for the RFP that would be included, namely environmental sustainability, housing affordability, design excellence, price discovery, and urban innovation. So the core purpose of today's presentation is to confirm that the RFP will include those identified criteria elements, and also to confirm the direction on the score allocation between the major evaluation criteria categories. As I'd said, November's council motion did authorize us to continue on with the in-progress solicitation process through to the end of the RFQ process. Chris mentioned that today is our deadline for submissions. What follows then will be the evaluation process for the RFQ process, which would end with a identification of our five shortlisted pre-qualified proponents, and then that we would continue on with an RFP process. This presentation today is specifically to discuss what that RFP process potentially or will entail in terms of what the criteria would look like. Our intent isn't to delve into the details of the RFP submission requirements, per se, but really to look at what the scorecard would look like. It's a very important philosophical debate that we have gone through amongst staff to sort of make sure that we're balancing all of the desired outcomes that the city has to ensure that the actual process and scoring mechanisms would actually reflect those priorities. So as a quick recap of how we got to where we are today, as I mentioned, back in November, we had come to GIC and ultimately council. We had our authority granted to prepare the RFQ and carry forward. The requirement, as noted, is to return to GIC to consider the evaluation criteria, as you see here, July 10th, that's where we are today. We ended up launching our RFQ on April 18th. As Chris noted, today is our deadline day, so we don't actually know who has submitted or how many, but what we can say is, the statistics that we've been tracking is that the RFQ itself is downloaded over 250 times. On top of that, we've held a optional proponents meeting, and the turnout to that was very strong, not just from local or regional, but also from beyond the GTA as well. So we're really happy to see that folks made the time to come down to Hamilton to at least check out the opportunity from beyond our close shore. So in addition to that, during the RFQ open call process, we've had quite a bit of engagement from interested proponents, and we can say that the type of questions that they had been asking really indicate a high level of engagement. They're asking with a lot of specificity, which indicates that they're, they want to ensure that they were getting their responses as accurate and close to what we were looking for from the city's perspective, so that they can ensure their best chances of scoring high. One other date, I guess I should mention that's actually not on here, is back in, on June 5th, we did present a draft form of this presentation to the West Harbor Development Subcommittee, and that was received as well. So just as a quick recap, as we mentioned, the solicitation process really consists of three phases. The first two are sort of a call process. The phase we're in right now, which is the RFQ, is a prequalification phase. This is where we're looking at the team members, their track record, their financial capacity, and whether their values align with the city's. We sort of look at this as the stage where talent is selected. We ultimately shortlist down to five, and then they'll be invited to the Request for Proposals phase, which is the topic of today's presentation. During the RFP phase, we'll be looking at their concepts, I also like to see visuals and things like that, but also really focusing in on what their financial business plan looks like, and ultimately what a financial bid may look like as well. We like to say that this is the phase where the prospective benefits and risks are identified and evaluated. What would follow ultimately is, from the RFP process, we would choose a preferred proponent with whom we wish to negotiate. We would come back to this committee and to council ultimately for approval to move forward with a request to, approval to negotiate. During that approval process, we would present ultimately what the preferred proponents' proposal looked like and what their financial bid looked like as well. And then that would lead us into the negotiation stage with authority from council. So ultimately, the negotiation stage is where we would say that the prospective risks are mitigated and the prospective benefits are codified. So if you recall, back in November, as we were doing our research leading up to November's request for approval, we had looked at a number of peer municipalities and government bodies that had been through a similar type of process. That was to get, to get an idea or some ideas as to best practices with which an entire solicitation process could be approached. We learned quite a bit from those reviews, and we decided to go back to those same bodies to look at how those same projects approached an RFP process, and specifically an RFP evaluation criteria. And so recall, that's the City of Victoria Dockside Lands, City of Vancouver, Southeast Falls Creek, which was the location of their athletes' village for the 2010 Olympic Games. The National Capital Commission recently went through a process for La Britten Flats and Waterfront Toronto. We picked one of their projects, Bayside, as an example. Now, as you can imagine, when we're looking at a solicitation process at a high level, there's a lot of similarity, but when you get down to the RFP stage, there's a lot of specificity, and everything is unique to that particular project. So there isn't- and on the other side of the spectrum is ultimately community benefits and other intangibles as well. And there's ultimately an interplay between those two, as you can imagine, as we are the vendors of the land, as well as the regulators of the land, and ultimately, long-term stakeholder of these lands, notwithstanding the fact that we're ultimately selling these lands, we want to have some degree of control on the outcomes. And so there is this interplay between what you give up on one side of the spectrum, potentially you gain on the other, and vice versa. The second lesson we learned was with respect to implementation. I know it sounds perhaps really obvious, but in fact, some of these peers that we looked at threw a little light on asking how the project would get delivered. And in fact, in at least one of the cases, we did see that lack of asking ultimately resulted in situations that came up, macro situations that are beyond anyone's control. But it turned out that implementation and execution ended up suffering as a result. Thirdly, we want to design against scenarios where the outcome can be manipulated. You hear a lot of situations where people make bully offers, things like that. I mean, ultimately, this is like a real estate deal, and you have to consider those types of possibilities. And so we ultimately want to be able to design against those types of outcomes. And the last thing we gleaned from looking at our peers was to keep focus, and ultimately to not try to do too many things with this particular process. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but ultimately, we have to trust the process. We've already gone through, or we will have gone through, the RFQ stage that asks a number of questions with respect to the proponents, who they are, their capability, their financial capacity, who their team members are, what their track record looks like. We have to trust the fact that, once we get through that phase, that phase of due diligence has been done. And then we look at the next piece, which is at the RFP phase, what do we want to really cover off in that phase, recognizing that there's also a negotiation phase, and that's where a lot of the devil is in the details comes in, and you ultimately want to...you potentially can deal with those things at that stage. Keeping the RFP scope narrower ultimately allows us to focus on the priority objectives that we want to have considered under evaluation during the RFP phase. So what we did was, we took all that knowledge that we had gained from looking at our peers, and we set some guiding principles. The first one, which is one that actually carries on since the very early days of this entire project, which is setting sale prevails. That's something that we've never deviated from. There are eight core planning principles that are outlined in setting sale. Those will continue to be upheld throughout the process. We also know through past public consultation processes that the principles of affordability and accessibility are also very important, so we want to make sure that those are reflected as well. The idea of winning on the margins. So as we had mentioned, through the RFQ process, we'll ultimately, hopefully, if everything goes well, have five highly qualified proponents. So they're ultimately going to, in many ways, be very similar, and their bids probably be very similar as well. So what we need to be able to do is, we need to be able to insert mechanisms throughout the RFP criteria to ensure that there's opportunities for these proponents to be able to distinguish themselves and their bids from the others. Process-driven approach, very similarly as stated before, we want to be able to focus on what matters at this stage. Part of that reasoning is because we also don't want to spread the points too thin. Ultimately, whatever points you have, you've got to proportion them out and allocate them amongst themselves. And if you try to cram too many things into the criteria, then everything ends up just carrying lightweight and ultimately not being able to come out with a clear winner potentially from that process. And lastly, a guiding principle is long-term positioning. I think we all recognize that this project has a long-term horizon, and as we had mentioned, notwithstanding the fact that this is a sale, the city will have an interest in what happens to these lands forever and ever. So we also need to be cognizant of that. We want to strike a balance between the short-term results and the long-term strategy. So what does this ultimately mean in terms of a criteria scorecard? So as you see, there's basically four main categories that we've laid out: development plan, project implementation, urban innovation, and financial proposal. And what we're proposing is that it's ultimately a two-envelope proposal. The first envelope includes the development plan, the project implementation, and urban innovation, and those combined for 60% of the total score. And then there's a separate envelope for the financial proposal that makes up 40%. So ultimately, we're talking about a 60-40 split, as we had alluded to, between the financial benefits and the qualitative benefits.
Sorry, Philbert, if I may.
Yes.
And Councillor, or sorry, Mayor Eisenberger, just wants to speak to this one point.
Sure. Just on this point, so is it a two-step process then? If they...if you measure the 60%, which is the 30, 15, and 15, you open that envelope, what happens at that point in terms of deciding who goes forward and who doesn't go forward?
Yeah, so we'll ultimately set a benchmark. We want to make sure that we do set a benchmark to pass on to the second stage, because that protects against what we had mentioned is manipulation, right? So you don't want someone to be able to come forward and have just, you know, a ridiculously high number in terms of bid, but they give a very poor technical submission. Now, having said that, the way that this would work is, you'd have to pass the benchmark, you'd get your second envelope open. Assuming that everyone passed the benchmark, you would then add together the scores, right? So there is still a combination. It's a mixture of the two halves. But what we want to ensure is at least a minimum benchmark. I mean, we're not setting a very...an extremely high bar for the technical score, but we want to eliminate those who potentially are trying to lowball on the technical, thinking that they can come in with the highest dollar bid.
That was just my question on that point. Thank you.
So actually, yeah, that was the explanation for that. So I can go through the rationale really quickly, but the 60-40 split, as we had said, this is sort of between the qualitative and quantitative criteria. We looked at it this way, is there's no single component that's going to be worth more than half, so that keeps a balance to it. This is also in line with the community feedback. Back last summer, we had done quite a number of public consultation exercises, and in that...through that process, you know, we learned that the public was also fairly divided, but, you know, in the end, everyone kind of wanted to kind of split somewhere down the middle, but tilt a little bit towards the community benefits, and not so much on just the price itself. So the 60-40 actually is quite in line with that. With respect to the concept of winning on the margin, if you turn back here, if you see, urban innovation and financial proposal actually end up being the two segments where there's real opportunity to win on the margin. That represents 55% of the total point value. You know, as I said, if we did everything right through the RFP or RFQ process, pardon me, we probably would expect that the first two elements, the development plan and the project implementation plan, scores would probably end up fairly close to each other, because we have very qualified, creative teams that come forward, that show a lot of ability to be able to put something forward that we as the city want in terms of plan and product and concept, as well as their ability to execute as well. So urban innovation is a little bit of a...quite an open category, and that allows proponents to come forward with creative ideas that could affect any aspect or dimension of the project. And then, as you can see, the financial proposal itself as well, carrying a fair amount of weight. As you can imagine, if a lot of the points earned on the other categories are similar, then in the end, price does end up still becoming quite an important piece of how you distinguish a bid. And then, as we had noted, the two-envelope system, so the first reason why we do the two envelope is it mitigates the bias. You open the technical first without knowing what the prices are, so you're not biased by that information. And as we had noted, that it also prevents a proponent from buying the deal. So in terms of next steps, you know, we'd like the authority to move forward with the RFP on the basis of this scoring framework. We...amongst staff, we've been diligently working on the RFP itself, and what all the elements are, and actually, you know, how the structure will work, and sort of creative ideas for how we can extract the types of responses that we want to see. And then ultimately, we hope to distribute these RFP...the RFP to the pre-qualified proponents by November. Our goal right now is to have our RFQ evaluation process finished and be able to announce our shortlist of preferred proponents by mid-September. So this would follow quickly on the heels of that. One other item that we would like to note is, we recognize that, you know, we as staff are moving forward with the RFP process. The next stage where we are required to return to GIC and council is ultimately, once we've already selected a preferred proponent, so that's the single out of the five. And...but we recognize that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, and one of the biggest moving parts ultimately is going to be what the financial deal looks like. And it's quite a complex...it can be a complex topic at times. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to return to this committee and to council with a report and a presentation, walking through what potentially you could expect to see in the final deal that we bring forward for approval to continue to negotiate. So just in terms of that, there's a number of variables, how the land ownership ultimately will work in terms of parcel drawdowns and phasing, different methodologies that we can approach to do pricing, as well as the concept of time value of money, and how timing and phasing ultimately will tie into that. What I want to do is flashback to a chart that we had shown back in November. This was back in November, what we had envisioned the timeline for this project to look like. And this is where we are now with it recast, with everything that's happened to date. And you can see that the change is actually fairly subtle, and it only affects 2017. As we had noted, we ended up releasing our RFQ on April 18th. Originally, we had thought that we'd get to it a little bit earlier than that, but all that's done is shifted everything forward a little bit in 2017. Now, back in November, when we had come forward with this prospective plan, we weren't quite sure all the elements that needed to be included in the RFP. And as we were talking about this idea of staying focused and how you're going to sort of focus on the priority elements, back then, admittedly, we had put in a little bit of padding, because not knowing how much time was going to be required based on the scope, we had about six to seven months for the proponents to...if you can see, from RFP release to the shortlist, to them submitting, that was about a six to seven month timeline. Now that we're a little sure of where we're headed, we feel fairly confident that we don't have to change the deadline on that. We reduced it to three to five months, and that's still ample time for these proponents to be able to respond. The other reason, too, why we had sort of a wider timeframe on that is, we...I guess, and we'll find out, I guess ultimately tomorrow morning, when we open the box, is who and how many, right? And that's a big part of what we're going through right now at the RFQ process, is being able to concentrate on or be able to try to guesstimate how much time and resources that we need to throw at that. When it comes to the RFP process, we will be down to five, so there's actually, to a certain extent, a greater amount of control that we have over that process, because we're only dealing with five as opposed to an unknown number of proponents. And that's it, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Philbert. Councillor Farr, followed by Mayor Eisenberger.
Through you, last slide, Philbert. Thank you for the presentation.
Yep.
I was here for the West Harbour Subcommittee as well, on the chart there with timelines. Yeah, so you get down to the RFP release to shortlist.
Yes.
And is that a star for July 14th, council approves RFP evaluation criteria?
Yes, so, I mean, you see that dot and that star. The dot is today, and the star is four days from now.
Right, for Friday's council meeting?
Yeah, I guess I can...maybe I should reiterate, if we recall, the circles are just a milestone. The star is where we're looking for a council motion or approval or an action, and then the dark blue spots are where we would come back and touch base with either this committee, council, and/or the public.
Okay.
So you can see...
So your next visit is Q1 2018, and I heard you mention that you'll have had chosen the one proponent then, but you could see the word finalists is pluralized. So can you explain that pluralization of finalists?
Yep.
Identified council approves negotiation strategy.
Correct. So in terms of where we're headed, we know that there will be five proponents at the RFP stage, right?
Right.
So there will be five proposals that come in. Ultimately, assuming that everyone passes those benchmarks that would get their two scores added together, we'll have five scores. Ultimately, we'll have a top scorer and a second, third, and fourth, and fifth place. What we haven't definitively decided yet is whether we would say the first place is the only one we would be willing to negotiate with, or whether you would do it in succession. There's many different ways. You could say, I'm giving the first place a window of two months to get business terms done, and if we can't reach terms, then I'm moving on to number two. Or you can say, well, I'm going to ask one, two, and three, and negotiate with them contemporaneously, simultaneously, and sort of say, who gets to the finish line first? So that's...you know, there's different approaches that you can take there, and that's why there's still the S in the finalists. We haven't decided that yet. That would be part of the negotiation strategy that we'd asked for approval for.
Okay. Through you, Chair, maybe a good time to define who the "we" is who's deciding on these things, the shortlist and so on.
Yeah, so we actually have an evaluation committee. So there's a core evaluation committee right now that's set up for the RFQ stage. They would carry on. They would ultimately be bolstered by an expanded evaluation team that would include some subject matter experts. For the RFQ stage, we've only stuck with internal staff, so about fairly senior staff. So we have five senior staff who ultimately sit on an evaluation team for the technical side. We also have a steering committee that's identified that includes our city manager, Mike Zagarek, as well as...who's our third, Chris?
Jason.
Oh, yeah. And, oh, sorry, Dan. So we have a steering committee with also sort of director and senior director-level staff. So as I said, they would carry on to the RFP stage as well, and they would ultimately be bolstered by perhaps subject matter experts at that stage.
Are you closing the RFQ at five today, the day of this GIC? It'd be great if the GIC was yesterday and we knew just how many RFQ candidates came forward, but was that by design? Through you, Chair.
Through the chair? No, that wasn't actually by design. It was originally supposed to be the 30th of June, but we did have a number, as I said, quite a number of requests for clarifications that came through that actually necessitated us changing a little bit of our tack with respect to some of our submission requirements. And some of it was actually with regards to their financial records, or sort of their financial statements, fairly technical items that we thought it was fair that we had to give proponents some extra time to be able to prepare for us. So ultimately, we did push it. It ultimately was a week plus the day because of Canada Day.
Okay. So you haven't opened the box, but the previous slides show a lot of interest with the hits and the calls, and you wouldn't be surprised, through you, Chair, to see a great deal of interest?
Through the chair, yes. We are excited, and...but we'll be just as surprised as anyone else at the end of the day when we open that box and see how many come in.
Okay. Finally, Chair, on the scoring, so slide five, and specific to third bullet down under development plan, or second bullet, residential program, including affordability in parentheses there, Philbert. So we have, council has approved a 5% affordability in the overall unit count. Is there...to my understanding, there is. Can you confirm, through you, Chair, that there... Finally, Chair, on the scoring, so slide five, and specific to third bullet down under development plan, or second bullet, residential program, including affordability in parentheses there, Filbert. So we have, council has approved a 5% affordability in the overall unit count. Is there, to my understanding there is, can you confirm, through you, Chair, that there's actually some bonus score points or bonus points, or you'll get additional points if you add to that 5%?
Through the Chair, I don't know if we'll call it necessarily bonusing, but there, we are weighing out the, how you ultimately score someone who does the bare minimum, because that's effectively is the policy direction that came through, through council. That's basically a minimum, to a certain extent, that's just, that's just a pass fail to, to a large extent, right? Because if you don't hit that, if you don't make the commitment to hit that, then, then you ultimately fail. For those who potentially can present something that goes beyond that or stretches beyond that, yes, we're, we are contemplating bonusing, but we have to figure out exactly how that scoring mechanism works. The question is, is, does, does passing ultimately get you zero, and then you get more on top of that? The other item that we would also have to consider is recognizing that the getting, giving more on the, on the, on the technical side potentially ends up being traded off on the pricing as well.
Fair enough. Finally, press release or something tomorrow, once the RFQ gets tallied up?
Yeah, we're, through the Chair, we're still, we, we were talking about that this morning. So we actually, so the, the, the closing happens today at 4:30, at 4:30. So tomorrow morning, we'll be able to open the box and count, and then we'll know how many bids. Right now, just due to some scheduling through the summer and things like that, we actually haven't finished all of our training for our evaluators, so until all our evaluators get their training, we don't open the, the envelopes themselves. What we're hopeful for is that on a sequential basis, we can get our compliance evaluators all trained by Wednesday morning, and then we'll be able to at least open the envelopes then, and then we'll see. And then, and then we haven't decided how we would necessarily communicate that.
Can you just, at 4:35 today, just give me an approximate how many envelopes, and I'll tweet it and take responsibility for it? Thank you, Chair. I know it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a full box, and I appreciate all the hard work today.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Eisenberger.
Maybe you can just confirm that there's a full box?
Yeah.
That'll be good enough, that'll be good enough for me. You know, bottom line is, congratulations, we're here, and this has been a long time in Ken getting here, so great work by you and the team, and, and Chair, I'm mindful of the time, I'm, I'm more than happy to move to approve.
First, we need to receive the presentation, move by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Pearson, all those in favor carried, move to approve by Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, all those in favor carried.
Carried.
Thank you, Filbert. Onto 7.4, sale of lands proceeds handling CM 17006, citywide. Do we want to hear the presentation? No, we can move it? Move by Counselor Marula, seconded, no?
Is there anything you want to say, John? There's nothing addition to what we've already said.
All right. Then, Madam Clerk?
We have a motion to waive the presentation.
May I have a motion, move by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Jackson, to waive the presentation, all those in favor carried. May I please have a motion to res- for item 7.4? Move by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Green, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried, moving on to item, thank you, 8.1. Hamilton L. Leading the Way Lead Grant Program, Counselor Green.
I did have one question as it related to the police board. She said 8.4 or no?
No, one.
Oh, thank you.
All right, may I just read this first? Hamilton, Leading the Way Lead Grant Program Application, LGP 17-01, Flamborough Power Center, Inc., 135 Clopson Avenue, Flamborough, PED 17122, Ward 15. Is there any discussion? Move by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Marula, all those in favor?
Carried.
Moving on to 8.2, amendments to delegating authority by Law 10-052, Barton Kennelworth Planning and Building Fee Rebate Program, PED 17123, Wards 2, 3, and 4.
Seconded.
Seconded, move by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Green, all those in favor?
Carried.
8.3, Small Business Enterprise Center 2016, Activity Report, PED 17125, Citywide, move by Counselor Farr, seconded by Counselor Green, to receive, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried, now Counselor Green on 8.4, Hamilton Police Services Board Report, PSP 17-80080, Performance Audit Police Reserve, Citywide.
Thank you very much. There are two line items in here which talk about the ending balances for 2015 and 2016. It was a provision for litigation and the special events, but what's not included is the total budget. So I'm just wondering, I'm just curious, if, because I didn't see in the report where the total budget, what are the overall budgets for provisions for police litigation, and what, what did they spend last year? This is talking about the reserve accounts, I'm just asking for the overall budget. It's not presented in the report.
So Ferguson?
Yeah, they're relatively inactive accounts, and that's why at the auditor's suggestion, we're collapsing them all into one reserve fund now. So both of them are relatively inactive.
So the, as I read the report through you and perhaps to the, the previous speaker, those are the reserve accounts, and as I read it, that there is, these are, these, both line items are redundant because, precisely because they're accounted for in the actual operating budget. So the operating budget accounts would be separate from reserve. So I'm just wondering what would be the police services litigation account in the operating budget?
I don't have it at my fingertips, but it's our city legal department that does all the litigation, whatever pursuit. I think it's John Ryan is his name, Nicole, maybe you can help with that. But he handles all the litigation for the, for police services.
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe it's Paul Ryan, but yes.
Paul Ryan, sorry.
No, no problem.
So through you, to our legal department, how much have we spent for 2015 and 2016 on litigation for police service?
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, so those, as the Counselor indicated, are handled by our staff, so no external fees at this point that I can speak to.
But how much are they, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not asking the question directly enough. Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to staff, what is the line item in the operating for our legal department that deals with police litigation? How much do we spend as a municipality for litigation against police?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, unfortunately, I don't know that I have that out as a specific line item. I can take a look and see what we can get back to you on that, but I don't have it, the number, the, the amount attributed to a particular staff person, I don't have that level of detail.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, did you want to have any information brought back to you, perhaps?
I'll, I'll follow up offline, I'm sure it's readily available. Just as I read the report, Madam Deputy Mayor, I understood that these were redundant precisely because they're already included in the operating budgets. And so as a reserve, it would be separate from what they would anticipate annually, and I just wanted to know what the annual operating litigation budget was as a line item.
Thank you. May I please have a mover and second for item 8.4, move by Pearson, seconded by Johnson, all those in favor, carried. Onto 8.5, Capital Projects Work in Progress Subcommittee Report, 17-003, May 30, 2017, move by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Johnson, all those in favor? Carried. 8.6, Capital Projects Work in Project Progress Subcommittee Report, 17-004, May 31, 2017, move by Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Johnson, all those in favor? Carried. 8.7, West Harbor Development Subcommittee Report, 17-002, June 5, 2017, move by Counselor Farr, seconded by Counselor Marula, all those in favor? Carried. 8.8, Business Improvement Area Advisory Committee Report, 17-005, June 13, 2017, move by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Green, all those, all those in favor? Carried. Hamilton Future Fund Board of Governors Report, 17-001, June 16, 2017, move by Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Pearson, all those in favor? Carried. 810, Multiyear Budget Planning Subcommittee Report, 17-001, June 27, 2017, move by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek, all those in favor? 811, Modernizing the City of Hamilton's Live Streaming Capabilities and Experience, CM 16006, APW 17058, citywide, to be distributed, Madam Clerk. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, my apologies, I was looking at, to see if Counselor Marula was there, my head went into minutes. It doesn't matter, he doesn't need to be, that's okay. Thank you. I see. 4811, Modernizing the City of Hamilton's Live Streaming, do we have any questions? Counselor Ferguson, followed by Counselor Farr.
Yeah, first question is, so it's, it's great that we're finally on here, the sound system working, because so often I can't hear, and Kirk keeps telling me it's turned up to maximum, and it is getting to be a few years old now and maybe ready for some upgrades. My last question is, this was sitting on our desk, does this mean we're going to go back to electronic voting? And if so, this, the downside of the system we have, maybe I should drag this question to Rome, should I?
Voice and Janice.
Is, is the, we had an electronic voting system where you pushed the green key or the red key for yes or no, but it wouldn't recognize second time speakers and move them down the queue. This says it does tell who's in the queue for, for speaking. Has that been upgraded, and we in fact going to be able to go back to electronic voting? Through you, Madam Chairman, to the right staff person, I assume it's Rome? No? Okay.
Through you, Madam Chairman, the option is available, and we can definitely take advantage of it, it's there for our use, and it is an upgraded system which does include better control of the voting system. So if council wants to use that feature, it's available.
The reason we discontinued using it before was it, 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 it put you in the queue, depending when you pushed your microphone button, and didn't recognize that first time speakers had to be first before second or third time speakers. Has the system been upgraded now to be able to do that? That was the only reason we shut it down.
Those reasons, Madam Chairman, yes, it has.
Yes, it has? Oh, fantastic, thank you.
Counselor Farr, followed by Counselor Green.
Okay, I, first I wanted to recognize, Bill, he's not, he left, but he sat through many hours. Bill's from Cable 14, sort of the do-it-all there, engineering-wise, and we had a chance to talk in advance of today's item. So through you to, who is it we're speaking to? Del? Okay, Delphina. I don't want to call it even concerns, because as you know, more than most probably, Madam Chair, Cable 14's been a big TV partner, particularly with the council broadcasts for decades. So on the automated system, and I think for the most part, they're quite happy to know that we're going to have some HD quality cameras, and, more to the point, you've seen in the last year and a half, a lot of volunteers working those cameras at council, that the automated system doesn't require the volunteers, they can be used for other programming. But the one concern, or one of the things Bill and I talked about, is the movement of the cameras when they're controlled by our microphone. So I can turn off the microphone, I turn it back on, my turning on and off of this microphone will activate the camera panning in and out. Correct, Delphina?
Through you, Madam Chair, correct.
And how's that going to look on Cable 14 quality broadcast among the many quality broadcasts that they deliver to their communities? Will the panning be done, or will the viewer be seeing that sort of, sort of rough camera action, the close-ups, the fadeaways and all of that?
Through you, Madam Chair. The system is set up to operate in two different modes. One will be automated, which means that when you activate your microphones, the cameras will pan to you. The resulting feed will not be as professional as if we had human intervention to manage the switching of the cameras more seamlessly. As a result, our recommendation C is precisely to provide that service. We are recommending an RFQ go-out, to procure services to manage the system in a more professional manner so that we can avoid some of those movements in the camera that would seem somewhat less professional than if we had the human, a human being that was professionally experienced.
And, and you have that as, for council meetings and some committee meetings? So, so item C is not just addressing the issues of Cable 14, but just for quality viewership online as well? Through you?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. It would be an on-demand service. They, they, they would be called in as required to provide that service as deemed necessary, depending on the type of meeting.
So that's an offset limit of 90K, Delphina, and you and I had a chance to talk about this in the past. Can that include, that's a, not a bad wage, is that more than one FTE? Through you, Chair?
We thought an RFQ, through you, Madam Chair, we thought an RFQ would address the issue of multiple FTEs that might be required to cover for vacations, and would assure us that the service would be sustainable. So the number of FTEs would really be up to the company that was successful in achieving the RFQ.
But, but the 90K, would that cover, would this person cover more than just panning in and out, basically is my question? Zooming in and out with a camera, through you, Chair?
There are, there, through you, Madam Chair, there would be multiple services that the individual would perform during the meeting. It would include proper titling and graphics to ensure that the presentations appear correctly, to ensure that the correct speaker is on screen, that the cameras pan correctly, so if one of the counselors or an individual moves, the cameras would move correctly with the speaker, and other functions as required that we would put into the specification.
So there is potential for this person as well to have a discourse or communicate to the viewer with like live chat, that sort of, that's, that's a possibility as well, through you, Chair? Updating where we are in agendas, that sort of thing? Although I see the technology actually does that as well for the viewer online, being able to, to connect with the actual agenda. Through you, Chair?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's possible. We can put that into the scope of the RFQ, and they could manage communications subject to our communication policy.
Perfect, great, awesome. Okay, thank you. Delphina's done a really good job representing facilities on this, and certainly Counselor Ferguson and I sat down last term of council with the concerns with respect to technology, the unreliable nature of technology. Mayor Fred Eisenberger, one of his early comments as mayor second time round was about the sketchy nature of our technology, and we are a long way from where we were just a few years ago if we approve what's here today. So I just want to thank staff, and I know lots of folks, including our friends at Cable 14, will be looking forward to utilizing this technology and providing a quality viewership to those folks who want to pay attention to me rambling on on this microphone with the close-up and all.
Thank you, Counselor Green.
I have to say, I'm very encouraged by this, a very simple kind of update, keeping us in, in line with other municipalities around the region, clarity around speakers' lists, voting, all of those things that sometimes the way that we vote in kind of a, in a historic way, might not get, might not get captured, right? Like we, we just often say carried, and we don't know exactly who stands where unless we, so every single time, I'm, I'm very happy to see that, as well as the speakers' list that lets us know in situations where we have 10 other people in front of us, that maybe we should keep it to the five minutes and so on and so forth. So for that, I'm grateful to Delphina to be able to move forward with this and her staff, because I think it's, it's going to help with the overall running of our meetings, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. And I'm sure I missed this, and I do apologize, but in terms of the timeline for full installation?
Through, through you, Madam Chair, the timeline is scheduled to be in August. It depends on whether this is approved today or not.
Yeah.
But it's just a matter of ordering these components. Some of them are an eight-week delay on the ordering, so that will depend on today's decision from council.
And, and a very obvious thing that we often have is these, these microphones hopefully will be a little more anatomically correct for us, and just to, to triple down, all of this stuff that we see before us on this sheet will be put up on the, on the screens as well for the public to see in terms of speakers' lists and everything else?
Through you, Madam Chair, we're working on the actual design and the workflows and where it would be best to display. So there will be further demonstrations and communications to members of council on the final product, but if, if that's a desired feature, it can be accommodated with this system.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all. I do, I fully support this, I'm very excited that we're finally here.
Thank you, and, and Mayor Eisenberger, can you take the chair for just a minute? And it's just, if you could just comment or clarify through the Chair, a comment that Counselor Farr made. Now, when this is broadcast on Cable 14, clearly they have an opportunity to speak to what's happening in chamber.
to speak to what's happening in chamber, but I'm hoping that there isn't going to be anyone who would be commenting, making any sort of comment when we are in live with any sort of council meeting or subcommittee meeting that is being webcast through the city's website, correct? There wouldn't be any sort of moderation, anyone making any comments?
Delphina?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Do you need verbal comments?
Thank you. I'll take the chair back. I need a motion to, oh, sorry, Council, Mayor Eisenberger.
So can I just thank the staff? This has been a long time in kind of getting to this point, and again, it's, you know, one of those issues that is our kind of outward-facing approach to the community at large, and how that happens is, I think, extremely important. So I think this is a must-do, and you know, the more, the more that we can have and improve our communications and live streaming, you know, the better. And if we can improve that not only here, but beyond, beyond this room and into our other kind of meeting spaces, that would also be better. So is there any plan in terms of how we do that in Room 264? Or is it, yeah, 264? Are there other places where we have meetings? So we have, you know, we have great live streaming done by our friend, Mr. Coleman, but I think we ought to be doing our own live streaming and as much as humanly possible in every possible venue here at City Hall. So can you tell me what's happening?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct. Room 264 is included in the base scope. The current microphone system will be used in Room 264. That was done in order to, to keep within the budget. The microphone system will probably need to be upgraded in Room 264, but the same system that operates in council chambers will also be installed in Room 264.
Okay, thank you. And then we also have, you know, 192 and 191 downstairs. There are committee of adjustment meetings that I understand are for all intents and purposes public. How are we making out with those other spaces where we also have meetings but don't necessarily have these kind of capabilities?
Through you, Madam Chair. The order priority was council chambers, and improving first the high-definition video quality, and then secondly, ensuring that the audio was integrated properly with the video. So that, that sort of expanded our budget, and then together Room 264, there weren't sufficient funds to go into Room 192 and 193 at this time.
That's, that's fair enough. So is there, is there a move to then move some of those kind of more public meetings to Room 264? I know, I know committee of adjustment seems to be kind of the higher-order one. The other ones are not as, as critical in terms of public need to know, but I think committee of adjustment would be an interesting one to have, at least as public as, as possible. So is there a, Rose, you have a thought on that?
Yeah. Madam Deputy Mayor, through you. It would depend on the scheduling.
Yep.
And when a quorum can be obtained, being limited to only two rooms could be a, quite a challenge to schedule everything in them.
No, understood, but I think it's still worth, worth looking at. I think, you know, if we can utilize these capabilities and maximize our kind of outward-facing approach, I think that'd be, I think that'd be very helpful. So I would just ask you to consider that as, as we retool these, these two rooms, that we use them fully as opportunities for us to broadcast, so those important meetings. Thank you. Wasn't a motion, but I, and I'm sure council chambers could be used for that purpose as well, right? So we're not often, we're not always here, and so committee of adjustment could very well happen in this chamber as opposed to in Room 192. So I just open the door up to consider using these great assets as much as humanly possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by the mayor. Item 111. All those in favor? Carried. Moving on to 8.12 Modernizing the City. City's live streaming, CM16006B, Citywide. Moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Farr. All those in favor? Carried. Motions. Development Charge Demolition Credit. Counselor Johnson.
Ashley, that was referred to AFNA, and we'll be dealing with it on Thursday.
This matter has been removed from today's agenda as it is appropriately listed on the July 12th Audit Finance and Administration Committee Agenda. Notices of motion. Counselor Ferguson, would you please introduce your notice of motion?
I have a matter regarding the Ancaster Arts Center that's before you, and it is timed sensitive to do some grant applications that the Ancaster Center for Performing Arts can apply for if this.
We need a motion to waive the rules of order.
Seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek to waive the rules.
All those in favor? Carried.
So the motion before you today is a 10-year license agreement. We have a license agreement with them now, but this is to extend it to 10 years. They will be operating this facility, and they tend to operate it on their own revenues. They're, they're not looking for any grants to do that. But the reason I'm bringing it forward today, it's been suggested that they could be eligible for some heritage grants from senior levels of government to help us with the capital cost, to get that across the finish line. So that's why I have it before you today. I won't read it all out, because I know we're running a little late, but I do, I do want to thank, sorry?
Thank you, he said.
I do want to thank, though, Jason Thorne, Ray Kessler, who's here today, who actually drafted this resolution for me, and Anna Bradford, who coached us through the maze with, with some of these grants that are available. So between the, I can't take any credit for writing the resolution. That was done by those staff, and once again, particularly Ray and Anna. And so it's before you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek.
Counselor Green.
I see, I see here the first item is a 10-year term at a nominal net rental rate. What is a nominal net rental rate, and how does that reflect our policy for facilities' Normally, we would have numbers, Madam Deputy Mayor, included in here so we could make an informed decision about what we're agreeing to.
Ray?
Through, through the chair, Counselor, the, at this point in time, we do not have a lease per se. There was some urgency to getting authority to, to actually negotiate an agreement so that we could meet the timeframes with respect to the funding application. And so what's being put forward at this point in time is a recommendation that we enter into an agreement, or we negotiate and enter into an agreement based on those terms. Now with respect to a nominal net rental rate, that basically means that they would not pay the net portion of our rental rate.
So as I, I'm very interested in this, because there's a project in my ward that I would love to see us also pursue later on, if this is how we're going to be able to partner with community. I think it's an innovative way to create partnerships, and I'm just wondering, what is the policy as it's set for other facilities? Do we have, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, to staff, any other examples where we have this kind of deal with nonprofits? I'm assuming this is a nonprofit, first off. Yeah. So I'm just wondering, what, what other examples do we have where we do this, and what is the policy?
So through, through the chair, under the municipal act, the council does have the authority to do nominal value transactions with not-for-profit corporations, in recognition that many of these organizations don't necessarily, it's difficult to find a viable business case for, for, for them in a commercial market type of transaction. Nevertheless, there, there are quite a few examples of agreements that the city does have with not-for-profit and charitable organizations throughout the city, often in rec. centers and community centers that are on those sorts of terms.
And I'm, this is great, because I can think of one on Gage Street that I'll be looking at. Capital Maintenance Reserve, so that would be typically what? There's, just, Madam Deputy Mayor, there's a lot of provisions in here that don't have numbers, and every time we get around this table and talk about making informed decisions, they typically have values attached to them, and yet before us, this motion has no values attached to it. So what would be our capital maintenance reserve for this deal?
So typically, a capital reserve provision would be anywhere from 2.5% to 4% of the value of the capital that's invested into the property. We don't have a final business case from the tenant in order to assess all of the numbers at this point in time. What we are advising council is, is that this is the basis for which we will negotiate. If there are any terms that, that would require some sort of budgetary impact on the city with regards to a contribution, that we would return to council with that.
That's, that's fair and fine. As I say, I'm supportive of it and spirited, because I, I can think of all of us having these opportunities down the line, but Madam Deputy Mayor, I, I can tell you, it's been my experience, anytime you bring a motion in front of this council without any numbers attached to it, people typically get uneasy and there's a bit of unreadiness, and we typically kick it back. Actually, we refer it, just like we did, you know, when we were talking about the $15. We want to know, what does it actually cost? It's a fair question. And so my question through you is, you know, what, could we have a staff report come back that would outline the, the costs, or would you be coming back through the negotiation process to have final approval? Like, is this just a memorandum of understanding that's, that is conditional and, and gives us off-ramps, as we sometimes like to hear around the table? Or are we just giving you a blank slate to go ahead and, under these terms, negotiate, and then bind us to numbers we don't even really know about yet? Through you to staff?
And, Chairman, I don't think.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I still have the floor. There's no point of privilege.
Is there anyone on staff that can speak to that? Otherwise, I can defer to the counselor if he has information to provide.
So through the chair, what we are requesting right now is authority to actually negotiate and finalize that lease at, at an appropriate time. What we are saying to council at this point in time is that we will not bind the city to any agreement that would cost the city beyond the net rent portion. We would not bind the city to any agreement that would actually have a financial impact on the city. That's really what the, the, if you look at item number four on that list, in terms of the carefree and net lease, that's what those terms actually mean.
Okay.
Counselor Ferguson, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, I'm actually satisfied. I just, you know, as I say, by, by point of process, and I can, I could tell you, we did it four hours ago. Gosh darn it, we don't have the numbers on the motion. We need to refer it back to staff. And yet here we are, we have this motion before us, which is an exciting motion. I think it's a good, smart, leveraged way to partner with the public sector, to leverage public assets. I have no problem with that at all, but it's just not consistent typically with the way motions are written. So, you know, I'm, I'm supportive, and I'm looking forward to the same support when all the other members of council come back looking for the same type of opportunities, because I think he stumbled on something pretty, pretty clever here. Thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek. On the motion, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Moving on to 11. May I please have a motion to approve the amendments to the outstanding business list as shown before you? Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All those in favor? Carried. Now, we do have to go back into closed session. May I please have a motion to move back into closed, sorry?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. If we could approve the minutes in open session, you don't need those.
I'm sorry?
You can approve the closed session minutes in open session?
Okay. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes from closed session in open session? Moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor? Carried. Now we're moving into 12.2. Two, in closed session?
In closed session?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. You're moving into camera for items 12.2 through 12.4. We're moving into closed section, into closed session for items 12.2 through to 12.4. May I please have a motion to move into closed session respecting items 12.2 through 12.4 pursuant to section 8.1 subsections C, E, and F of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300 and section 239 to subsection C, E, and F of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended as the subject matters pertaining to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for city purposes, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the city, and the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Could I now ask that the public and any staff were not required to be in this closed session meeting? Please exit the chambers, taking all of your personal belongings with you. Members of the public will be invited to return to hear any further deliberations upon committee reconvening in open session indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of the white noise. The committee will, in the event they are in closed session for more than 30 minutes, wait up to five minutes upon reconvening in open session before proceeding with the meeting to provide members of the public and the media time to return to the meeting. Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor? Carried.